I'm gonna call this meeting to order. I'm gonna ask David if you'll lead us in prayer and remember Jackie Williams.
Let's pray.
Yeah, Father, we just thank you for this time that we can come and conduct the county's business. Do wanna lift Jackie Williams up who's in the hospital right now, Lord. We just pray that you touch her and be with her family during this time and help to heal her. And also, Charles and Tim aren't here tonight, Lord. They're with us online, but they're not here in person. So, we just wanna pray for them as well and lift them up and just be with us during this time and help us to have the wisdom to do the right things in this county, Lord. Just give us the wisdom to help this county grow, to help this county prosper. And we just want you to continue to be with those that are sick right now. Those with the coronavirus, the nurses and doctors that are working each and every day to try to make these people better. So, I also want you to put a hand on our nation right now, Lord, with all the unrest. We just want you to be with this country right now and just continue to pour out your blessings, Lord, and just keep people safe out there. And once again, we just say this, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
MOS for the roll call.
Mike Fouts, Tracy McDaniel, Tim Spencer, Quay Little, Lyman Dawkins, David Smith, Charles Mathis.
Here.
All right, do I have a motion? We adopt the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. I'm gonna ask for the roll call.
Mike Fouts, Tracy McDaniel, Tim Spencer, Quay Little, Lyman Dawkins, David Smith, Charles Mathis.
Yeah.
Next is approval of minutes from regular meeting, May 18th, 2020. Do I hear a motion? If you have a motion in a second, I'm gonna ask for the roll call.
Mike Fouts, Tracy McDaniel, Tim Spencer, Quay Little, Lyman Dawkins, David Smith, Charles Mathis.
Yeah.
Next is the approval of claims for Cherokee County in the amount of $540,284.69. Do I hear a motion? Second. If we have a motion in a second, I'm gonna ask for the roll.
Mike Fouts, Tracy McDaniel, Quay Little, Dawkins, David Smith, Tim Spencer, Charles Mathis.
Here, yeah.
All right, next, we have a presentation from our auditor, Ben, in regards to the June 30th, 2019 audit.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a privilege to be here with you this evening and to make this presentation and to bring you an update on the audit of your financial statements for the year end of June 30, 2019. And so, right now, as of this moment, we are still completing our files on all of our audit work. These are marked preliminary, but they are in final form and they should not have any changes made to them. And so, I wanna start out with a document that is several pages. It's, and I'm not gonna read through it, but it is what we are required to communicate to governance. It's under an auditing standard number 99. And we have substantially completed your audit of your financial statements. What this letter talks about is what is our responsibility with respect to your audit and your financial statements. And an audit is very financial statement centric. We look at a lot of things in an audit. We look at your systems and processes and internal controls to evaluate where the vulnerabilities might be, where the weaknesses and strengths are, so we know where to spend our time and how much work we need to do to get to an unmodified opinion. Now, we got to an unmodified opinion, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. So, you have an unmodified opinion on your financial statements. That's what they will be. But our responsibility, in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, is that we express an opinion, which we have done, we will do when we issue these financial statements. And secondly, our responsibility is to plan and perform the audit to obtain reasonable assurance that your financial statements are fairly presented or otherwise not materially misstated, for whatever reason. Intentional, unintentional, mistakes, misunderstandings, those types of things, lack of understanding of accounting principles. And so, we have, we are actually required to detect material fraud if it's going on in accordance with our auditing standards. Number three, we're responsible for communicating significant matters related to our audit that, in our judgment, is relevant to you gentlemen with respect to your responsibilities with the oversight of the financial reporting process. And that's what I'm here to do tonight. So, that is our responsibility. We also have responsibilities for the other supplementary information required and not required in your financial statements. There are a lot of schedules and supporting schedules. There are things that governmental auditing standards require, government accounting standards require called require supplementary information, your management discussion and analysis and some of your disclosures. And then, the state requires a separate schedule in the back on state on the fines and fees and assessments from your court system. We tell you what we did with that and how we feel about it. And so, that's all in our opinion letter. But the second page of this letter talks about some significant issues, and you can read this later, but we talk about accounting estimates, a lot of estimates in here, and the big ones are with the big numbers. Not just depreciation on your assets, capital assets, but your pension and your other post-employment benefits. All of those have major, major estimates. And you actually don't come up with those numbers, the state does, and some actuary does. And so, just a heads up. And then, you have landfills that you have cost of closure, post-closure, you've got engineers working on those. You also have disclosures relative to all of that, as well as tax abatements and fee and lieu arrangements and so on like that. And that's actually a good thing. That disclosure came out a couple of years ago, and it indicates that you're doing economic development, the more of that you've got going on. Now, we also are required to disclose to you if we're getting any pushback from management in trying to get this audit done, and we have experienced none. Everybody has been very cooperative. Everybody's been very transparent and open. If we sensed otherwise, and really, we used to tell people, we know a little bit about accounting, we know a lot about people, because this is a people business and people are the, is what makes the internal control and the financial reporting function work. We have a however there, and that is that we were not able to begin and complete the audit in what we felt would be a timely manner because we couldn't get information. And so, we talk about that a little bit. We did assist with some of the year-end accounting and reconciliations and even the financial statement preparation. We assisted with the big Gatsby disclosures in here for the other post-employment benefits and the pension. Those are very complicated, complex disclosures, and we did assist with those. And so, the big issue there is that your management was able to understand the, what we did and take ownership of it. And so, that is a major issue. We're also required to let you know what adjustments had to be made to your financial records that, in our opinion, would not have been made had we not shown up. And that's about the way to say it. Your folks may not have figured it out. There were a lot of adjustments made to your financial records, and there's a list of them, two pages on the back. Some are adjusting entries that affected your ending operating number, and some are just reclassifications. In our opinion, really, there aren't any of those that your folks would not have had had they had the time to go about it. We did help, so, you know, we don't need credit for coming up with them, but you've got a list of them there and we can talk about them at some point. But we are required to share those with you, what adjustments got made. And then, disagreements with management, we really didn't have any. Sometimes, that's a good thing. It's healthy to have discussions, and we're required to tell you who won the argument and how it ended up in your financial statements. We didn't have any of that. And we didn't find that management was doing any opinion shopping. And so, we have some other verbiage on the back end of this. This is not a brand-new letter for you folks. You get one every year, I'm sure. But those are the important things in this letter, and you can read it and we can come back and talk about it again. Now, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go to the financial statements themselves, but I'm not gonna go through them. I just wanna kinda hold it up here. And I wanna share with you that this is a very comprehensive document. It's called a comprehensive annual financial report in accordance with the Government Accounting Standards Board, the Gatsby out of Chicago. And so, I would suggest you look at it and you read it. It's a lot the same format that you've had in the past. It starts out with management discussion and analysis, and that is a very good document to read because it explains what happened and a little bit of why. And then, you have your financial statements themselves, several schedules, and then the notes, and then in the back, some combining schedules and your budget. You will see in these financial statements that you dropped about a little less than $400,000 on your general fund, but over all, all of your governmental funds, you about broke even on the positive side. Your general fund did about the same in 19, it looks like, as 18. And a lot of that was due to some of these adjustments you'll see on the back of that first document that you can look at there, okay? That had to be done to clean up some things. But the budget, you will see your revenues came in over what you anticipated and your expenses came in under what you had budgeted. So, you're well within your budget ordinance. There was a wise old mayor named John Little that explained to me years ago when I was a younger that you have to have in South Carolina a balanced budget. You have to provide revenues to match your expenditures in your budget. And he was right on. That's state law. But the other thing is you can't overspend your appropriation without passing another law. And that's critical. It's called a supplemental appropriation. You didn't need one. You stayed within your initial budget, and whether you knew that or not, you did. Almost $1.8 million less than what you had planned. So, now, what I'd like to do with this audit, again, we have issued, we will issue our unmodified opinion on your financial statements. When we do an audit, we come in and looked at your systems, your processes, your internal controls, and we use the COSO model, excuse me, the COSO model, the Committee on Sponsoring Organizations of Internal Control, it's been around about 25 years. And there are five elements to this COSO model. You have the control environment, which is the culture, the attitudes. It starts with council, and it goes down through top management, clear through the organization. What is the tone at the top and how does it filter down? The culture and the environment and the attitudes. And to put it simply, as your independent auditors, if we're the only ones that care, then the risk is too high to do an audit. But we find that you have, not just you folks here, but your management throughout this county organization, people, your people care, and we found that to be the case. But the control environment, and then you have control activities. That's the old checks and balances, segregation of duties, what we used to think was internal control. That's number two. Number three is information communication. And we're gonna talk about that because that's where the financial information comes to governance, to management, to the department heads, to the employees on a timely, it's timely and it's accurate so that you can make decisions. If that's not happening, you've got no internal control. Now, the other two are risk assessment, and you folks, your management does that on an ongoing basis, assess the risk of what could happen and how could it happen? And you have the opportunity to have more of that going on if your organization is receiving timely, accurate information to look at and evaluate and compare with what you think ought to be happening. That's real important in any organization. And then, monitoring. No system of internal control is worth anything if nobody's checking to make sure it's happening the way it's supposed to. So, those are the five elements. And so, in our federal report, and I say federal report because this is a report from us on internal control over financial reporting. This is the federal version of the management letter, and they have a specific format they want this in. And so, you have on the last page, the third page of that, you have the condition and the criteria and the cause and the effect and the recommendation. and the criteria and the cause and the effect and the recommendation. I'm not going into all of that. But we found pretty much the same thing as the prior auditors did, that, that your information communication system is not working the way it should. And so, that is a material weakness in your internal control. Okay? And so, I'm messing with this mic here, I don't mean to, I'm pushing forward on this. But, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report. I appreciate the opportunity, the trust that this governing body has placed in us. We take it very seriously, and we have paid close attention to that trust, to honor it. And so, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
I will say, Ben, we greatly appreciate a local company taking on this responsibility of an audit. I know when you put it in the hands of people that live here and work here, they do, they put their whole heart into it and do everything needed to get the things done and completed. And we do greatly appreciate in regards to getting this done. First of June was excellent. I know you had hurdles to overcome, and, but you got it done, and, and we greatly appreciate it. I'm going to start off with one question with regards to the $400,000 that we're in the hole, because I think after we have had some discussions, we thought we were $50,000 in the hole. And there's a matter of what we cleaned up, but I never got clarification on what that 400, what, what accounts or what liabilities or what asset, what was moved to accommodate that 400?
Well, there's, there were two specific accounts that make up that difference. There were some other ones. But there were a couple of, there were a couple of liability accounts with debit balances in them. And there were all kinds of refunds. By the way, let me just say, this was a team effort. You know, Johnny, you know, Steve, I mean, a lot of folks were involved in getting this thing to the finish line. And at the end, I added my 44 years of expertise and experience and, and perspective to help suggest some final decisions on some of this to get here tonight. So, some of this stuff can be addressed tomorrow and going forward.
Okay.
Now, so, but it was a team effort. And so, there was $275,000 of a debit balance sitting in an account. There was actually a liability account, but it was a kind of a clearing account where refunds, tax refunds, and, you know, and back to, and there was a couple of big numbers on a tax sale and different things was in there, but...
Sent and been paid.
Did, it was, it was a debit, first of all, it was a debit in a liability account, so that perks us up now. And then there was the same one in, in delinquent tax. This was real estate tax and then delinquent tax, another 85, almost 90,000. So, there, there's your difference, if you take those two numbers. Now, we looked at that, and your folks looked at it hard and couldn't figure it out. And so, here's the perspective, real simply. $350,000 sitting on the balance sheet as an asset that you can't, that's really not an asset, it's just some numbers there that really ought to flush, go through the income statement and move out of there. It happened, now surely should be reconciled, should be determined where it should go, but, but you couldn't justify it as being an asset. So, there's $350,000 that I said, well, I'm going to suggest you consider moving it to the income statement and adjusting, and it went into miscellaneous income, it actually reduced miscellaneous income. And it's in there. So, it, you started at 50, another 350, now you're at 400. Okay? So, that was the decision that your folks made, I think it was a valid one. Now, they can go back. And in fact, we met with Jackie and went over, and she said, "I could figure that out. If I had some time, I'd figure that out." So, so the, the understanding is, is here, but there wasn't, there wasn't any time. Okay? So, that's the numbers. But there were some, there were some, a lot, there were some, a lot of other numbers like that that went back and forth. But those are two that, that are representative of what, what happened. Okay?
Anyone that...
Mr. Cogan Howard, thank you for, for doing the audit, just as Chairman says. Couple of questions, and I tried to follow you. It's always good to hear what we're doing right, but I always like to hear what we're doing wrong. So, I tried to follow you on the internal control, and I wrote, one, that the information and communication is not necessarily where it needs to be. Give me, give me your top three. I'm assuming the information and communication would be one of those.
Well, that is the one. That is the one. There's nothing else that rose to the level of significance. Okay? We did have one minor observation that, you know, your payroll clerk can actually change pay rates if they want to. We beefed our testing up on payroll. We, we found in our testing that it wasn't happening, but it's a possibility. So, that's something that they've already addressed. But everything focuses, every bit of, of cash flow, every bit of money comes through the treasurer's office. So, that is the absolute linchpin of the county. Everything revolves around that. If, if that's not working, and if that's not getting done in there, then you don't know. Okay? So, so we really, that, that's, thank you, Mike, for that question, because, because when it all boiled down, that was it. And, and so, what we tried to do is take a 35,000-foot view, reconciliations, daily, weekly, monthly accounting, and then reporting out to you guys and to all the department heads, you know? And you could, and, and the department heads, like, like the sheriff, he gets grants and, and he, and he has laws and regulations that he has to comply with. Seizures, forfeitures, how is this money being spent? They can't tell from the accounting records if it's being done the way they directed it being done, and they need to be able to verify that. It's kind of like when you get your paycheck every week, every month, and you look at it and you say, "Don't go on," you know? There's something wrong with that. I didn't authorize that withholding, you know? But there's a check and balance, and we all know that, you know? Employees are a big internal control, because they question. But, so, it all focused in that one function, which it has in the, over the last several years. But that may not have answered your question, so go ahead and...
I was, I was looking for your top three of where we could do better, as far as accounting principles, or just your general thoughts of where we're lacking.
Yeah, yeah. You've had some turnover in the finance area, and your, your prior auditors have suggested, you know, beefing up that and moving some of those duties over. There, you know, constitutionally, there's not a lot of guidance as to what who should do, you know? What you have in this county, if you go around these offices, you have people that are helping other people. We found that. I mean, they're willing to help, willing to help. And it's a real good spirit of cooperation. And that's what really has helped get this thing moving along. Okay? Yeah. Anything else?
Anyone else? Okay.
Could you make a determination of where we are right now as far as being prepared for this year's audit?
No.
Where, where are we?
Okay.
Where are we on bank reconciliations and things like that?
I don't know. I, I, I did with, with one function, with, with one area, I had asked for updated information for April, and I haven't received it yet. So, that may indicate that banks aren't reconciled up to that point, but I don't know. Steve and, and Johnny could tell you where that is, or give you a good indication of where that is. But we got bank reconciliations probably in April, May. We're still getting them, you know? So, it wasn't August like last year, it was a little earlier. Okay? So, that, I, I don't know where you are right now. I know that pretty much, Tracy, everything we, while we're working on something, we said, "Okay, now let's, let's go ahead and do this now for next year." You know, "Let's go ahead and do this now for next year." So, I don't know. Hopefully, it's going to be a lot better, you know?
So, you're anticipating a lot quicker audit next year?
Well, I remember, you know what? I've learned not to anticipate too much, but I don't mind being disappointed, but yes, yes, I do.
By December?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. I like to put a timeline. Charles, did you have something?
I'm all right with everything.
Okay. Tim?
I'm good.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything? All right. We're going to move on. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Next is the second reading of Ordinance 202014 to amend the agreement for development for joint county industrial park by and between Spartanburg County and Cherokee County, so as to include additional property in Spartanburg County as part of the joint county industrial park and other matters relating thereto Tindall Corp., Fartans LLC, Tiger Lake Spartanburg LLC, and Stone Solar LLC. Do I hear a motion? A move.
Say it.
We have a motion and a second. I'm going to ask for the roll call.
Folks.
Yes.
Tracy McDaniel.
Yes.
Tim Spencer.
Yes.
John Little.
Yes.
Lyman Dawkins.
Yes.
David Smith.
Yes.
Charles Mathis.
Yay.
Next is the first reading of Ordinance 202015 to infinitely spin, suspend Sunday work prohibitions, referred to as blue laws pursuant to Section 53-1-160 of the South Carolina Code of Laws. Do I hear a motion? I, sec, did I hear a second?
Thank you.
All right. Now, we have a motion and a second. I'm going to let Mr. Bratton explain a little bit about this. This is what was asked about last meeting in regards to changing the blue laws in this county.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, we've, Mr. Mathis has worked on this and has gotten to us. Basically, as you all know, blue laws as they exist are a state law wherein, when they were originally passed, they prohibited the sale of certain items on Sundays, and prohibited certain things to be sold before certain times and so forth. Over the years, those blue laws at the state level have been somewhat watered down, and many things that was in the original laws have been tweaked and changed, and there's exceptions in there. However, it is still on the county government. One of the provisions in the state law is, puts it on the county council to make a change if you want to have one regarding the ability to sell certain items on Sunday. Keep in mind, the state law is very specific, and it says clothing can't be sold on Sundays, accessories can't be sold on Sundays and so forth before a certain time of the day. So, what Mr. Mathis has prepared is a document that basically, as I'm looking at it, it, the county council is hereby suspending indefinitely the application of Sunday work prohibitions according to the state law, and thus allowing businesses in Cherokee County to open prior to 1:30 PM on Sundays. I think 1:30 PM is actually in state law, that businesses cannot open until that time. So, you're removing that restriction countywide. That's one thing I want to be sure. I know that in the ledger, it was an article that said it was in the unincorporated areas. And, but I want to be sure you all understand, it is countywide. The county council is the only one with the authority to make that change. So, this will include the town of Blacksburg and the city of Gaffney, so it is truly a county rule. Now, what is still in the ordinance that you all are being asked to pass, or is being presented to you all to pass, is protections as afforded to workers by state law, and I guess business owners also. If someone is what they label in the state law as a conscientious objector, and they say, "Well, I want to attend church, and I don't want you to have to, I shouldn't be forced to work on Sunday morning," then that person can do so without fear of retaliation from their employer. So, those protections are still afforded in our ordinance as they are in state law. So, this certainly does not require a business to open early. Businesses can open at whatever time they choose. One thing I want to address to be sure everybody, we, this is not addressing alcohol sales or anything like that, we're simply dealing with the time a business can open. So, that being said, Mr. Chairman, I'll actually ask Mr. Mathis, have you got anything to add to that?
No, sir. The ordinance has been presented in accordance with the state statute that applies to this matter.
I, I just want to say one thing. Some of the incorporated areas, the city, I had a couple of questions in regards to that, thinking the city had this authority. Only the county has this authority, is that correct?
That's correct. It specifically states the county council.
I want that to be clear to all the constituents out there that we have this right, and at this time, I'm going to ask for the roll call. If, unless there's any further discussion, I'm sorry. Is there any further discussion on this matter?
Mr. Little, one thing I will add, and I think where that confusion may come is, there's some exceptions in the state law that says that a municipality, if there's going to be a special event at a location, then they can, the city government or whoever can give permission on certain days to open early. And I think that's what's been done in the past in some of our locations. So, they may have a children's choir singing at the outlet mall, and that gives them permission to open early. So, anyway, that's what's been done in the past, so I think that's where the confusion comes from.
And with regards, y'all, this is a ordinance, so it will be three hearings, I mean, three readings and one public hearing. Okay? So, now I'm going to ask for the roll call.
Folks.
Yes.
Tracy McDaniel.
Yes.
Tim Spencer.
Yes.
Clay Dethel.
Yes.
Lyman Dawkins.
Yes.
David Smith.
Yes.
Charles Mathis.
Yay.
All right. Next is the first reading of Ordinance 202002, Cherokee County Budget Ordinance to provide the levying of taxes and fees for the county for the purposes of the fiscal year beginning 7/1 to 6/30/21. Do I hear a motion? Second.
We have a motion and a second.
I'm going to open up for discussion.
Mr. Bratton, any changes since our last meeting, the line items you went over since our last meeting?
There's a couple of changes, Mr. Folks. Those totaled up, I think, about $1,900, if I recall. Mr. Leiser, currently, the budget for the general fund sits at $26,604,347. Just to hit some of the highlights that we talked about the last time, there is no millage increase included in the general fund budget. There is no cost of living increase for county employees. The budget includes a longevity pay program that has been changed from the current methodology to the, to a flat amount per year of service, as we discussed in August of this past year. And in your packet last week, I provided you with the memo that I gave y'all back in August. And we can go over that a little bit more if you all would like. There is a 7% employer health insurance premium increase included. There is a significant increase in our P and L insurance property and liability, and that's happening statewide, guys. No matter who you're with, we're seeing that statewide. The budget also reflects the continued 1% per year increase in employment, employer retirement contributions. So, our employer retirement contributions for this coming year will be 16.56% for the South Carolina retirement system and 19.24% for police officer retirement. So, for every dollar we spend, you can add that on top of payroll taxes and everything else, and that's why I always tell y'all to figure about 25% for fringe. That's where the majority of it comes from. Now, keep in mind that currently, the state is operating on a continuing resolution, and included in that resolution, they have suspended that 1% increase. However, the belief is, out of Columbia, and we've talked with the Association of Counties... and other county governments also, is that once they are able to pass a budget in Columbia, that we will then see that 1% take effect, so that 1% increase. So, we went ahead and included it just to be conservative, so that we don't get caught blindsided on that. Currently, there are two part-time positions included in the budget. One is a part-time position that's converting a part-time position to a full-time position in the voter registration office. The other is a part-time code clerk in the building safety department. Total cost of these two part-time positions is $33,626. The budget also includes an additional contracted security officer at the county administration building, a cost of $40,500. Detention center food and medical line items are adjusted to match the contracts that you all authorized us to enter into back at the beginning of this fiscal year. There is also included in the budget is salary adjustments for 24 road deputies and 21 detention officers upon successful completion of their respective police academy training. That's $2,000 for each road deputy and $1,500 for detention officers once they have completed their time at the academy and successfully passed that program. A $25 stipend for poll workers is included. As I mentioned to you all at our last meeting, we've had a hard time finding people to work, not just because of COVID, but people just aren't interested in it anymore. And it's hard to find people. The pay is very little. For you to go work the polls all day, you wind up being there 12 to 13 hours, and you're making way less than $10 an hour at that point. So, that's tough. So, what we're doing is putting a $25 stipend in here, and I wanted to call that detention. In the capital fund, we've got a budget of $1,303,374. There's no millage increase recommended, and that would utilize $94,804 in reserves to balance that budget. And we'll talk about the details as you all would like. Finally, the 911 tariff fund is balanced at $719,070. This includes all eligible expenses that have traditionally been paid through the general fund, but were covered by tariffs received from landlines and wireless lines. They also include capital items in the detention budget. Any excess tariffs received would go into reserve for the 911 tariff fund. So, we're certainly not tapping into the reserves there. We bring in more than enough to cover this budget. So, that is included for you all's consideration also. Mr. Chairman, we can proceed however you'd like.
Well, I'm gonna say this, y'all. I'm, well, I'm gonna say this, Tim, before we begin. I think we have different parts that each councilman probably wants to talk about, and based upon the situation, we will amend per discussion. I don't want to loop or put two or three different items together and amend like that. I would rather, I think, I think everybody'd be more comfortable doing one item. If we, if we choose to change, disregard, or whichever, we amend and do that one, and then vote again for the next one. That way, we can be very clear where we are, and not have it lumped together and do them all at one time, because some people may have been opposed to a particular thing in before. So, let's do one at a time. So, I'm gonna open the discussion up to everyone in regards to where you stand, if you want changes, or where we're at.
Mr. Spencer, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I got a question. On the longevity, I see how you changed it from this date forward. Does that also go back to the previous percentage that we give everybody?
No, sir. No, sir, that, that does not. The, the way it will work is that you, the longevity as it exists right now is frozen at that amount, if you all choose to go this direction. And what, the only thing it's changing is incrementally going forward, how much would be added to that. So, that original amount that you all paid out, and the amount that's been being earned, is, is, will remain as it is, and effective July 1, 2019, however many years of service you have achieved at that time, then you will be recognized by that flat amount that we've put in the budget.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, on this date.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion?
Looking at the capital request, we had brought this up in our workshop, but there were two garbage trucks that were requested, and there was only one that was approved. I really want us to look at approving two. We'd already talked about going to a four-day work week. We're having trouble right now with repairing those trucks. We go out on some days, and we don't have enough trucks to even run the route. Eventually, it's gonna get back to the homeowner and not getting trash picked up, or we're gonna have to work a lot of overtime to try to get that done, and safety with long hours. And again, getting one more truck may not solve all that, but I think it would help it.
That was a request from Mr. Estes. As you all know, that, those are, those vehicles are used hard on a daily basis. We do have a lot of older trucks. The trucks we've purchased the most recent two years have, we've gotten very good service from them. We just last week had a warranty issue on one of them. We had no problem getting that taken care of, which is one of the first times I remember even having that warranty issue, which we've been very fortunate with that. Two trucks would go a long way toward helping us to keep our maintenance costs down, of course, but also to help us keep our overtime costs down. We, we ran a route last week with seven trucks. And the guys out there are doing all they can do, but we own 13. When six are down, it's, you know, you do what you can do. So, that's up to council, but that certainly would be appreciated, certainly would be helpful. It would certainly help us be more efficient in the pickup of garbage on a daily basis.
I certainly agree with Mr. Smith and the need for an additional truck purchase this year. It's common on a weekly basis that we have five and six trucks down, a day or two a week. And, you know, it's just tough to get those routes run on a timely manner, and I would be in agreement with Mr. Smith that that need is there for two trucks.
Okay. Well, Mr. Bratton, was, one thing you were trying to explain was with regards to asphalt paper that you removed, would, and explain the money with regards to that?
One of the things I, I did remove from this budget was, we had a request in Roads and Bridges for an asphalt roller. I have removed that item from the budget.
From the budget workshop budget?
Yes, from the budget workshop, and so it is not included in this budget.
That was $110,000?
It was $110,000.
So, that was $100,000 savings that we are looking at this budget to start?
$110,000 savings, yes, sir, from what you were giving at your workshop. And so, then, to pick up another $175,000 now, you're actually only picking up 65 from what you were presented before.
Okay. I, I think I'm correcting this, Joe, is that not right? Can we vote to amend each item? I want to make sure I'm clear on this.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, do I hear a motion and a second to amend to allow administration to purchase a second trash truck in this year's budget? All right, we have a motion and a second, I'm gonna ask for the roll call.
Folks, Tracy McDaniel, Spencer, Clay Little, Lyman Dawkins, David Smith, Charles Mathis.
Yay!
Do we have any further discussion?
Mr. Bratton, do we foresee having to do this moving forward, getting, purchasing multiple? One, what do you think? Is there something common?
Mr. Dawkins, it would certainly be nice for us to be on that rotation. And even if we staggered it, if we went 2-1-2, something along those lines. But, we run nine, nine trucks per day. We have 13 in our fleet now. If we add two, we're gonna keep 13 in our fleet. We're not, we will, we would sell two, would be my thoughts, our worst two on Gov deals. So, which is easy pickings. We've got one with a blown motor right now that we can sell.
Said that.
So, but this keeps our, our fleet newer, maintenance costs drop, and so forth. So, yes, sir.
Do we have any other further discussion about this year's budget? All right, well, since we voted to amend, I think that carries forth our first reading, correct, Joe?
Now, you vote on your first reading with the amendment.
Okay, all right, now we're gonna vote on first reading with the one amendment. Can I ask for the roll call? No, we already had the motion and second discuss.
You need, you need another motion and a second now.
Oh, I thought we voted to amend.
Well, I think you moved into your amendment, so I would come back now to your motion.
Okay. Can I get a motion and a second for the amended budget request ordinance, excuse me? We have a motion and a second, I'm gonna ask for the roll call.
Folks, Tracy McDaniel, Tim Spencer, Clay Little, Lyman Dawkins, David Smith, Charles Mathis.
Yay!
All right, next, everyone, is the first reading of all the volunteer fire departments. It's the first reading of ordinance adopting a budget containing estimates of proposed revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year beginning 7/1/20 and ending 6/30/21 for the following budget proposals. First up, 2020-3 Antioch. Do I hear a motion and a second? Motion and a second, I'm gonna ask for the roll call.
Yay! Ben Spencer. Clay Little, Lyman Dawkins, David Smith, Charles Mathis.
Yay!
Next will be 2020-4 Buffalo. Do I hear a motion? We have a motion and a second, I'm gonna ask for the roll call.
Folks, Tracy McDaniel, Tim Spencer.
Tim?
Tim, can you hear us?
Clay Little, Lyman Dawkins, David Smith, Charles Mathis.
Yay!
Next is 2020-5 Cherokee Creek. We have a motion and a second, I ask for the roll call.
Folks, Tracy McDaniel, Tim Spencer, Clay Little, Lyman Dawkins, David Smith, Charles Mathis.
Yay!
Next, 2020-6 CKC. A move? We have a motion and a second, I'm gonna ask for the roll call.
Tracy McDaniel, Tim Spencer, Clay Little, Lyman Dawkins, David Smith, Charles Mathis.
Yay!
Next, 2020-07 Corinth. And a second, I ask for the roll call.
Folks, Tracy McDaniel, Tim Spencer, Clay Little, Lyman Dawkins, David Smith, Charles Mathis.
Yay!
Next, 2020-8, the Gaffney Fire Protection Area. A move? Second. Motion and a second, I'm gonna ask for the roll call.
Tracy McDaniel, Tim Spencer, Clay Little, Lyman Dawkins, David Smith, Charles Mathis.
Yay!
Next, 2020-9, Grassy Pond. We have a motion and a second, I'm gonna ask for the roll call.
Tracy McDaniel, Tim Spencer, Clay Little, Lyman Dawkins, David Smith, Charles Mathis.
Yay!
Next, 2020-10, Goacher White Plains. A move?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, I'm gonna ask for the roll call.
Folks, Tracy McDaniel, Tim Spencer, Clay Little, Lyman Dawkins, David Smith, Charles Mathis.
Yay!
Next, 2020-11, Draytonville, McCown's Mountain, Wilkinsville. We have a motion and a second, I'm gonna ask for the roll call.
Folks, Tracy McDaniel, Tim Spencer, Clay Little, Lyman Dawkins, David Smith, Charles Mathis.
Yay!
Next, we're gonna hear from Public Works Chairman Tracy McDaniel. Go ahead, Tracy.
Thank you, Mr. Little. Many of us, all of us, from time to time, have discussed where we would like to see the county be in 10, 15, 20 years, our visions for Cherokee County. We've had some tremendous successes in Cherokee County over the last few years in economic development, putting resource officers in the schools. I mean, we just, on and on, we've had some great successes. I feel like we've got a very good council and a very progressive council, and I'm so glad to be a part of that. We all agree that Cherokee County is bound to grow, especially with the 85 widening. And I guess that brings up our, our question, are we prepared for that growth? What are we doing to prepare ourselves? And what kind of plans do we have to capitalize on the growth, growth that we're gonna see along the 85 corridor? Are we ready? Do we have the infrastructure there to provide sewer, water, gas, and so on, all the infrastructure needs that are gonna be necessary for that growth along the I-85 corridor? And what, what do we really want it to look like in 10 to 20 years? That brings me to, to my next point. I feel like, and we've discussed this in years past, that we need to have a long-range plan completed for the county to help us identify those areas that we need to be working toward, and how to budget for these needs that we're gonna have in our county. It's much more than just infrastructure that this long-range study plan would encompass. But, of course, that would have infrastructure in there as a planning discussion. It's much more than just economic development. Each meeting, you hear us talk about some sort of economic development within the county, or how, what we need to be doing with economic development. And we hear from our Economic Development Board, and we appreciate their efforts so much. It's important to understand, and I know all of, we, we understand what economic development does for our county. It not only provides tremendous jobs, and we are, of course, looking for high-paying jobs and good benefits for our citizens, and we have the desire to keep our people here and working in Cherokee County. And we want our children and our grandchildren to be able to have a wonderful life in Cherokee County and stay with us instead of having to move to a bigger area to, to get these good jobs. So, we, we all have that vision. But, what, what do we really need in Cherokee County? What wants do we really have in Cherokee County? Are we missing something? I don't think, I, I certainly don't think that I have the answers, and I don't think this council or our administration, you know, has all the answers to this puzzle that we need to be looking at. You know, you, economic development funds a lot of things and keeps us from having to raise taxes tremendously on our, our citizens. I know all of you have heard this, but a $10 million economic development project brings in the revenues equivalent to 100, approximately 100 new houses. So, economic development is crucial to the development of Cherokee County. Of course, economic development helps our recreation, our education, our public safety, health, transportation, all of our county services, our trash pickup and all those. But, we need to look at all these areas, cultural issues, affordable housing, on and on and on, are, are some areas that, that I can personally see that, that we need, you know, to look at. So, we need a plan. Um, so we need a plan, um, put in place, and this plan is not something that I would envision that this council would alone just take on. I think we need community involvement, and I'm, I think we need input from the Town of Blacksburg, the City of Gaffney, Appalachian Council of Governments, and other agencies within our county, uh, you know, that, that are our shareholders, you know, in the county. So, um, I think this thing would help us and give us a tool in making sound budget decisions and knowing where to invest our tax dollars to ensure that we get the most bang out of the citizens' bucks there, and we provide the most opportunities for our children and our grandchildren come up that are coming along. Um, you know, this tool should help us to be proactive instead of reactive, and many times, we feel like that, you know, our successes may be, uh, we, we react to them instead of seeing them coming and being able to capitalize fully on that. Uh, this plan also wouldn't just belong to Cherokee County, uh, government, but it would be a tool for all the decision-makers that we have throughout our communities and business owners throughout the county. I think that, uh, we need to discuss this and come up with some plans, and, um, there's companies out there that, um, are marketing, um, experts, and they know exactly what we need to be doing and can lay this plan out for us, and I think we need to be, uh, proactive council, continue to be proactive council, and I would like to see us allocate, uh, up to a hundred thousand dollars in this year's budget for such a plan as this. And of course, I would like to just open this up for discussion among council. Thank you.
I agree with you, Tracy. I mean, government is not effective when it's reactive. Uh, I know when I decided to run four years ago, I won't, I have a progressive mindset. I wanna grow this county. Um, since twenty seventeen, we've had over four hundred million dollars in economic development. We've had eight hundred and forty jobs created. Uh, we've approved a new public works facility, recycling center, animal shelter. We've put SROs with the help of the school district in all the schools, uh, one of the first counties in the state to do that. Um, and that's huge. You know, we, we purchased the land for the new nursing home, uh, that's being built and will be opened up, uh, next spring, if I'm not mistaken. So, we have a progressive mindset, there's no doubt about that, but, uh, Ben Franklin, you know, I'm an old history teacher, and he said at best, if you fail to plan, you're planning to fail. And, uh, if, if we don't, uh, plan, then, then we're gonna fail eventually, and continuing to be, and I don't think we have the last three years, uh, while I've been here on council when I can't answer for the previous years, but just being reactive, uh, to certain situations, you know. Uh, we've had push from the community with, with recreation, uh, trying to get that going, um, you know, and, and sometimes you can be in a reactive state of mind and think, well, we, we, we need to do something, but planning to have a Cherokee twenty thirty or twenty forty, or whatever we wanna look at, uh, is, is vital, I think, uh, for that. So, I'm, I'm with you one hundred percent, and that's something that I would like to see go in the budget this year. I don't wanna do it over a two-year period to say, I mean, if it's, if it's a hundred thousand dollar tool, let's go ahead and budget for it. I don't wanna put fifty up this year and fifty next year because that just puts you a year behind. Eighty-five, said it four years ago, eighty-five's gonna fill in. Uh, the construction's happening, it's, it's gonna happen in Cherokee County, but let's be proactive, be ready for it with infrastructure instead of reactive, and, and, and we're gonna lose deals that way. So, uh, thank you for bringing that up.
We have any other discussion?
I agree as well. Um, I think assessment would be huge for us to find out exactly what we need, but it also gives us opportunity to, um, like you said, capitalize on opportunities that we do have coming down the line. Um, and it, and it gives our, our constituents and the citizens, um, a clear vision of where we're going and how we're gonna get there. And, like you said, I agree as well, it's giving them some input on what they would like to see. I don't know if that's an open forum, uh, format or, or, or other format, but, uh, I think that's something that we need, 'cause if you look at other thriving counties around us, uh, that's the way that they go. They, they have a vision and they have a plan to, uh, to get to that vision, and if not, we're just shooting in the dark, and, and hopefully, we hit the mark, and, uh, then it just tells you you're not gonna be successful that way, so.
I'm gonna say this, y'all. Um, I've been on here two different terms, and, um, I think we're making great strides towards, in this county, back in the driver's seat, we hold our own destiny. I think with regards to the Sunny Slope property, us working with the Board of Public Works to bring sewer out there is one of the biggest and best things that I've ever seen this county do, and I think it opens the doors widely. I agree, no one person on here can figure out anything or see the future, but if we get a group and we get an understanding and we all have communications, and I, I agree, I think this needs to be a partnership between the two cities and this government, or the county. I think we all need to work together so we all have a common goal and realize what is in, uh, in front of us, because, um, there's things coming to this area that can dramatically change our whole perspective in this county, of the widening and along with other different things. I, I think a hundred thousand dollars, as much as that is to a lot of people, I think it would a hundred thousand times pay for itself in the course of the plan. So, I, I'm gonna ask, um, with regards to what Tracy's proposed, is there a motion in a second in regards to this?
I'd like to make a motion.
We have a motion in a second, and, uh, to amend second reading budget to allow a hundred thousand dollars to be put forth towards, um, the plan for Cherokee County. I'm gonna ask for the roll call.
Mike Fouts.
Yeah.
Tracy McDaniel.
Yeah.
Tim Spencer.
Yeah.
Clay Little.
Yeah.
Lyman Dawkins.
Yeah.
David Smith.
Yeah.
Charles Mathis.
Yeah.
I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Mathis.
Thank you.
Oh, Mathis, Charles, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mathis, uh, Mr. Chairman.
A lot of Mathis.
I would request that the direction of the administrator, uh, that you consider a motion to go into executive session for three issues pursuant to thirty-four seventy A-two for the discussion of negotiations incident to a proposed contractual arrangement. Number two, for the pursuant to thirty-four seventy A-two as well, pursuant to the receipt of legal advice related to a pending threatened or potential claim regarding the county. And number three, pursuant to thirty-four seventy A-three regarding discussion regarding the development of security personnel or devices.
You hear this recommendation, do I hear a motion?
We have a motion in a second.
I'm gonna ask for the roll call.
Mike Fouts.
Yeah.
Tracy McDaniel.
Yeah.
Tim Spencer.
Yeah.
Clay Little.
Yeah.
Lyman Dawkins.
Yeah.
David Smith.
Yeah.
Charles Mathis.
Yeah.
We will go into executive session.
Motion in a second.
I'm gonna ask for the roll call.
Mike Fouts.
Yeah.
Tracy McDaniel.
Yeah.
Tim Spencer.
Yeah.
Clay Little.
Yeah.
Lyman Dawkins.
Yeah.
David Smith.
Yeah.
Charles Mathis.
Yeah.
Uh, now we will hear from our attorney, Mr. Mathis.
I have no additional information. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next, we'll hear administrative update, Steve Breiten.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just wanted to update you on where we are with COVID-19 in our county. Um, over the last few days, we've had quite a number of new cases come in. Um, today, we had four more. That's our total of forty-three. Keep in mind, that's since this entire thing started, so we certainly hope that the majority of those have recovered. Um, tell you that I have a friend who has just been diagnosed today, um, so, um, just keep in mind, it is very active, um, in our community, and, um, uh, we have not had any other deaths, but we're keeping in touch with DHEC. They're calling us, uh, when necessary. We still have the fourth lowest total in the state. Um, I'm not sure what we're doing right or how that's happening, but, uh, there is some free testing, I don't know if it's free or not, but there's testing available this week, um, for anybody who wants to go get tested can go get tested at, at the drive-in facility at the hospital, so, um, just wanna bring that up. So, um, if you're interested in being tested, then you can certainly go and do so without any symptoms.
How many deaths have we had?
We've had two deaths.
Mr. Breiten, is the county putting that out on social media, letting people know that, that testing is available?
We have not done so yet.
Do we do that?
But we can. Uh, we can. Now, the, there's been in the ledger, and I think the hospital is putting it out, but we have not put it out as a county yet. Um, we have, um, annually, if you all recall, we apply for some grants, uh, through, uh, the Emergency Preparedness Office. I just wanted to bring you up to speed on those. We have applied for a twenty twenty supplemental grant, um, that would be used to buy strictly PPE, uh, related to COVID-19. That money was made available, um, through the local emergency management planning. Uh, that total of that grant that we've applied for is sixteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars. And then we have our annual, um, LE NPG grant, and, um, keeping along the lines of what we've done for the past several years, we've asked for, um, an equipment trailer, cots, blankets, batteries, um, one more, uh, weather sirene. This one will be located at Draytonville McCausen Mountain Wilkinsville Fire Department. That is the last department that would get one. Uh, everybody else currently has one, so that one is last. And then a, um, an actual access control system on the emergency operations center down at Peachtree, uh, to put in place to where we can secure that facility a little bit better. The total of that grant application is sixty thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars, and, uh, we'll keep you apprised of that as we go along. Um, at our last meeting, we had a bid opening for the purchase of scrap metal at the landfill. Um, what I, that, at that meeting, you all remanded that to the Public Works Committee. Uh, that price was, uh, very low. Uh, we only had one bid. What I've done is, uh, talked with Mr. Wright at our landfill, and we're gonna hold on to that and put that back out for bid, and we're just gonna reject that bid, and we'll put that back out for bid in a couple of months. Uh, so that's where we are. If the council is okay with that, you all send it to Public Works, but if I hear, if I don't hear anyone with any opposition, then we're just gonna, uh, refuse that bid and move forward. And then finally, we've got a request, uh, from the detention center. They've had an issue, um, that we're looking for from the emergency, um, we're looking for an emergency purchase. Um, as the, um, um, fire alarm has malfunctioned, we've been having some serious problems with it. Um, during the last inspection, we repaired several things. System's still not functioning, functioning quite the way we want it to. Uh, there's several lights that need to be worked on. The alarm brain in the control, uh, room is, um, it's not working as it should. Um, so what we're asking for is authorization to, um, enter into an agreement with Siemens, which is who we contract with to, um, work on that particular equipment. Total price is seventeen thousand five hundred and fifty-four dollars, and I would ask that you all authorize me to, uh, replace the, basically, the brains, the control unit of that fire alarm system, um, at the detention center out of the capital contingency account.
Do I hear a motion? We have a motion in a second. I'm, I'm, I'm just gonna ask one thing, is this preventative maintenance along with this, or is this just the purchase?
No, sir, that's just to replace the, the control center of the alarm system. We found it through our preventative maintenance. Um, that's when it was discovered that we've, uh, as we go along, we've been finding that we've had some problems, and, um, Billy, the head maintenance guy at the detention center, has been working with them, but it's gotten to a point to where we just need to replace that piece of equipment.
Is this original piece of equipment to that Billy?
That is.
The original system?
Okay. Is there any other discussion? We have a motion in a second. I'm gonna ask for the roll call.
Mike Fouts.
Yeah.
Tracy McDaniel.
Yeah.
Spencer.
Yeah.
Clay Little.
Yeah.
Lyman Dawkins.
Yeah.
David Smith.
Yeah.
Charles Mathis.
Yeah.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Next, is there any appointments?
I have one, uh, Cherokee County Development Board, this is our at-large member, I'd like to reappoint Jim Cudd.
We have a motion to appoint Jim Cudd back to the Development Board. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. I'm gonna ask for the roll call.
Mike Fouts.
Yeah.
Tracy McDaniel.
Yeah.
Tim Spencer.
Yeah.
Clay Little.
Yeah.
Lyman Dawkins.
Yeah.
David Smith.
Yeah.
Charles Mathis.
Yeah.
Do we have any other appointments? Or at this time, I'm gonna ask for any old, new, or other business?
I have something, um, in light of everything that's going on right now in our country, um, I think it's important that, that leadership step forward and, and, uh, speak out on things that's, um, feel like things is done wrong, uh, especially to a whole community of people, so, a lot of the George Floyd, uh, situation, I would, um, like to take the stance and get any other input from any of the council members that, uh, this council stands in solidarity with the African-American communities against any unjust acts against, uh, that community members as far as police brutality or any other systems that, uh, that has any other